natives could sign on to the Affordable Care Act at any time. So there is, you know, you don't have to wait for the enrollment time. We get to check in at any time. And so why don't we go ahead and do the next slide? Okay, and not only that, you can change your coverage at least once a month. I'm not really sure why somebody would do that, but that's, that's part of the provision. So I'm going to turn this over to Rachel and Deborah now.
So Deborah, just jump in anytime. So I tried to make this as simple as possible. I did include links. So any information that I am stating is predominantly directly from the healthcare.gov website. So if there's information that is, a lot of information is being thrown at you and you forget some stuff. This PowerPoint will be available to everybody and the links are clickable. So you can directly go to the information that's covered. So let's just get started. Okay, so, so I'll just go basic, the basic information of the Affordable Care Act. So predominantly, a lot of people know it as the ACA or Obamacare. And it's a comprehensive healthcare reform law that was enacted in March of 2010. And it states that it has three primary goals, which is to make affordable healthcare insurance available to more people. Expand the Medicaid program to cover all adults with income that's below 138% of the federal poverty level. And also to support innovative medical care delivery designed to lower costs of healthcare generally. And so the Affordable Care Act is available on what we call the health insurance marketplace, which I will go over in a little bit. So then let's, let's, let's find out what Medicaid is. So Medicaid is the insurance program that provides free of low cost health coverage to some low income people. Families and children, pregnant women, the elderly, and people with disabilities as well. And to qualify for Medicaid depends partly on whether your state expanded its program or not. And you will either find that through the marketplace or if your state has its own marketplace, which we will also cover. It, you should ask them if Medicaid is covered through them as well. And the difference is Medicare is a federal health insurance program for people who are older and certain individuals who are younger with disabilities. Medicare is not part of the marketplace. It's automatically given to individuals. This was something, bless you, something that my job didn't cover. So, so just a quick background. So I worked for the call center for the marketplace. The marketplace has about six different sites scattered across the United States. So when you call the marketplace, it's going to be random. Unfortunately, you can't pick and choose which call center or which individual you'd like to talk to. I will brag for a second that Lawrence was the highest rated call center in the country. But anyways, but we'll go over that more as well. So, but if you do have any additional questions and you're having issues looking it up, the marketplace has answers, especially even answers on Medicare. So they will give you resources that you'd need to if you seek them out. So then we're also going to cover the Children's Health Insurance Program, which is also known as CHIP. Very, very important. This is insurance program that provides low cost health coverage for children and families that earn too much money to qualify for Medicaid, but not enough to buy private insurance. And it's also interesting that CHIP also can cover pregnant women in certain states. And each state offers CHIP coverage and works closely with its state Medicaid program. And again, similar to the Affordable Care Act, you can apply for CHIP coverage anytime. CHIP is primarily used for families who unfortunately have children who are diagnosed with cancer. So CHIP is a very, very, very important program. So, okay, so I keep throwing this word around about the marketplace. So the official name is the Health Insurance Marketplace. So shorthand it is the marketplace. This is a shopping and enrollment service for medical insurance created by the Affordable Care Act itself. And like I said, in most states, the federal government runs the marketplace. You'll also hear the marketplace or, or the exchange is another term that people use. And this is a place for you to get your health insurance for either individuals or families, which we'll, we'll cover a little bit. So you can go to healthcare.gov and you can apply for healthcare coverage through there. And then you also can, there's a, there's a number that you can call or you can do it yourself. Or you can also get aid from, in-person help from either a trained assessor or an agent or broker. Those individuals can help you as well. So I took a couple of screenshots just to, to get the general idea of how to navigate through the website. So this is the first page that you're going to enter when you go to healthcare.gov. So a couple of things here is if you already have an existing login. So the biggest thing is, is if you want to go through this process, you're going to have to have a working email address. That's the only way that they can like tag you or connect you or also help you with documentations and things like that. So you have to have a working email address. That's how to create an account. So you can, if you see the top right corner, you can log in up there if you already have an existing account. Or you can enroll if you see down on that green button, you can enroll and it'll prompt you to put an email address and then a password. And then you will continue on to the, the application. So this is what like the login page looks like. So again, if you don't have an account, there is a link on there where you can create your, your own account. So this is what it looks like when you're signed in. So it might look different. So I have coverage. So to answer some of your questions, so I work a part-time job currently. So they do not offer health insurance for me. So because of the Affordable Care Act and because I'm a registered Cherokee member, I can apply for the Affordable Care Act. I can get health insurance and I can get it covered. I also go to the Indian Health Services in Lawrence. They do know my insurance information, but I am still able to get coverage in Kansas City if need be because of my insurance. So, so if we look at the main page here, it'll list all of the applications that you've done in the past. If you've, if you've ever applied for the Affordable Care Act before. This is also the page where if you haven't applied, this is where you're going to apply. So what you'll do is you'll select, so if you haven't applied for this year. And again, like my mother stated, the biggest thing to remember is that anyone who is registered with a federally recognized tribe can go through this process anytime. You do not have to wait until open enrollment, which is from a specific date in November till the end of December. You do not have to wait for that date. And I wish they would have told me that previously. It was the only thing they didn't cover in training, which was interesting. So you'll put year 2020 on that and you'll select your state. And then you'll hit that apply or renew and that will bring up the application. Unfortunately, I couldn't get a screenshot of the application because I've already filled it out. But again, you can call the call center and they will certainly help you through this process as well. That's what they're there for. I can't tell you how many applications I filled out while I was working there for the short time that I did. Anyways, so, so here's, if you go into your actual application or excuse me, your account page, this is going to show you the plans that you've applied for. And as you see there, so if you look on the screen and you look on the right side where it says that premium tax credit, that is what you, us Native Americans are going to receive for the federal government to provide us with free healthcare. They are covering our premium. I will explain more of those terminologies in a minute, but that's the biggest, I blocked it out. But it's telling you the amount that you are receiving from the federal government as that tax credit as to how much your premium is being covered. One of, side note, one of the biggest things is a lot of these programs are not going to have dental. Usually dental is separate. I was lucky enough to find one that was both vision and dental. So that's kind of nice. Usually, usually vision is attached to your health, so you don't have to worry too much about that. But something to keep in mind, most definitely. And then there's other things. If you look to the left side where you can look at your actual eligibility, which we'll look at in a minute. We can look at your application details. Also, if you look at the very bottom where it says tax forms, that's where you find your tax forms when you're, you're doing your taxes for the following year and you need documentation to prove that you got your insurance through the marketplace. That's where those tax informations are. It varies. Some people need them and some people don't. So here's, here's an example of the eligibility. So this is what you will receive after you fill out the entire application. This is the, the document that you will, you will look at that will show what you are eligible for as a Native American. Again, you're going to receive that tax credit. So this is where it kind of breaks down a little bit to how much money you are receiving for that tax credit. And this also, I didn't show the full page, but there also is going to be a different section on this page that talks about because I registered as a Native American, you're going to have to send in documentation of proof. So, and it'll give you like a range date as to when you need to submit that information. All you need is a, some sort of copy of your CBID card. And you just, there's a place on the website on your account where you can upload documentations and you can just send them a scanned copy of your ID and that'll work completely fine and it'll work for the entire year. So I'm throwing a lot of terminology around so people know what these words mean. Some people don't, so I thought it'd be important to just kind of go over them real quick. So I keep saying premium. Basically, the premium is the amount that you pay for your health insurance every month. So that's like the grand total of what you're paying to be covered every month. Now deductible is going to be how much you have to spend for covered health services before your insurance company kicks in and starts paying for everything else. And then we have copayments and co-insurance, not coin insurance, it's co-insurance. Pay, or the payments that you make each time you get a medical service after reaching your deductible. And then we have the out-of-pocket maximum, excuse me, which is the most that you have to spend for covered services in a year. And then after you reach that amount, the insurance company then pays everything for covered services. And again, there's more information on that link there. And if you want like more additional information on what these things mean, because these are things that you're going to be looking for after you fill out the application and see how much you're going to get covered. And then you can look at the plans. So these are things to keep in mind when you're looking at insurance plans. And then here is another kind of nice article that the healthcare.gov had where these were things to keep in mind before or during when you're looking at plans. So the plans are broken down into four categories. There's bronze, silver, gold, and platinum. I personally have silver. And these categories show how you and your plan share costs. So the, so the higher you go, and what I mean, the higher, when you go to silver or gold or platinum, you're going to be paying more upfront. So your insurance is going to essentially be more expensive. But once you hit that, that, when you hit that cap, the insurance is then going to cover for everything else. It doesn't reflect different qualities of plans. It's just the ratio of how much you pay versus how much your insurance will cover you. And then obviously looking at all of the costs of your healthcare. So that's including your premium, but also looking at the deductible and out-of-pocket and things like that. The really cool thing about the marketplace is that you can compare plans right next to each other. So they'll have both information so that you can look and you kind of figure out, you know, okay, so this is what out-of-pocket is compared to this plan. So it's really, really nice, user-friendly in that way. And then another thing to keep in mind is network types. So your HMOs, your PPOs, your POSs, and your EPOs. So some plans allow you to use almost any doctor or healthcare facility and a lot of them limit your choices or charge you more if you're going to use your provider that is outside of your network or their network, which is based upon your zip code. So, so now we're going to talk specifically about benefits for the Native Americans and Alaskan natives. So I mean, my mom pretty much covered it pretty well. Again, the biggest thing to take away is that anyone who is registered with a federally recognized tribe, and I'm quoting the website, can apply for healthcare through the marketplace and you can do it any time of the year. And you will be qualified for a tax credit to cover your premium. Again, depending on the plan that you choose can vary the cost of your plan. So for instance, technically, my healthcare, my plan isn't entirely free because I've chosen a silver plan, which means that I'm going to be paying a little bit more than compared to the bronze, but then I'll have more covered once I hit that deductible. So while I do have most of my insurance covered by that tax credit, I do pay just a little bit for my premium, if that makes sense. So the website at the bottom is a really, really good link. It kind of breaks down more of the benefits that Native Americans and Alaskan natives receive through the Affordable Care Act. So if you have a moment to read that later on, give it, check it, check it out. Sorry, I can't talk. Another really good resource is the healthcare.gov website itself. That search bar at the top right corner, you can search essentially anything. Like again, if you forgot what premium means, punch in premium and it'll have like a glossary. It'll have articles that are related to it. So for instance, I typed in, I think I typed in Native American for the search bar and it got like 16 different results that are related to that. So if you need an additional resource to look up stuff, there's most definitely available. Again, here's more resources from the healthcare.gov website. So excuse me, more information on actual health coverage. There's some information on the exemptions that we receive. And then also specific information on Medicaid and CHIP, because I know some individuals were having questions specifically with Medicaid. Ma, did you want to cover the state exchange?
I want to go back to that site you were talking about for the last time. I just wanted to, where you were on the additional links.
Oh.
Those particular links have, have areas where you can go click in and it's going to give answers to all the questions you're going to have about different things that I even saw on this list. What's a tax credit? Can I apply anytime or how's my premium going to be? It's, I was on that site for a while at the very beginning when I started doing this with the agency. And it pops up a list of, I don't know, 20, 30, 50 questions that are very helpful for people to see, to teach you what it's about, first of all, and then how close you are to qualifying or not. So I encourage people to get into that site for specific issues because it really answers a lot. So just wanted to reiterate on that. Thanks, Rach. Kind of like one of those frequently asked question lists. Okay.
Ma, did you want to cover the state exchange since you were the one who did the research? No?
Sorry.
Okay, no, 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 sorry, you're fine.
Yes, um, so Deborah, pop in at any time as we're going through this. Most of the states are in, on the federal marketplace. But whenever you see an exchange that generally is a state-run healthcare system. And so a lot of the questions that we had before coming on were specifically about California and Colorado. And so I gave you the links specifically for those two exchanges. But on the next page will give, tells you the states that are on, they have their own health exchanges. Connecticut, Columbia, Idaho, Maryland, Massachusetts, Minnesota, Nevada, New York, Vermont, and Washington. And also there's a link to, you go to that link and it'll let you go to your state link. Generally, the, it's the same, but, but there are different ways that the states will handle Native American insurance that may be different from the federal way on the healthcare.gov. I don't know all the details about that. You know, so I came from California and I know that it's the same, although California does run its own site. California also has, you know, Indian health services there. And so it's pretty much the same as the healthcare.gov. And so Deborah, you know, when we were talking, there were a lot of interesting things that you had to say, in particular about people losing their jobs and, you know, what they should be looking to. So can you elaborate on that for us?
I'm, I'm going to ask you to repeat what you're asking me because you're a little bit muted. Can you go over that again?
Sorry, when people are losing their jobs, Cobra and then, you know, the Affordable Care Act and, you know, the situation with that.
I'm sorry, I'm just not hearing you.
All right. Do you have your headphones, like for your phone?
No, I don't have headphones.
Okay, if you talk right there, that's perfect. It's where the microphone, it's where the microphone is on your, on your laptop.
Okay. Hello? Sorry about that. When we talked about people losing their jobs.
Okay, so you're, don't turn the other way.
This way?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have no idea where the microphone is. Okay, when we talked about people losing their jobs and issues that come up with Cobra and the Affordable Care Act, you know, those situations and what people can do.
Oh, yeah, definitely. One of the things I did want to point out, because especially right now, when you are losing your job or you're working part-time now, your income's less than it was before, doesn't qualify you for your group insurance anymore. A couple of things happen there because once you start losing coverage through your company, you might be offered Cobra. And one of the things that I wanted to mention to people that's very important is Cobra is a benefit that you get when you lose your coverage through your employer. And then you can go on, sign up for Cobra, but you would be paying your own full premium plus 2% because Cobra costs more. And you would have the same benefits that you had with your employer. And so a lot of people will sign up for that and you don't really need to do that. So a couple of things happened at this point. Once you sign up for Cobra, then you're logged into Cobra for 18 months, some more, some lengthier time. You have 18 months. And in our state of New Mexico and probably a lot of the other states, Rachel, you might chime in on this. But once you have Cobra, you're not eligible to sign up for other plans because one, you already have other coverage. So that, that stops you from being eligible from these marketplace and Medicaid plans. And then if you say, that's okay, I'm going to cancel it, then you voluntarily cancel the plan. You haven't lost that coverage through no fault of your own. Then you become stuck with this Cobra plan. And so I try to encourage people to be educated, to look for other coverage through the marketplace, through Medicaid, before you actually choose to do Cobra, so you're not locked into that. So that was the one thing Jackie and I were talking about that I thought was really important because people get nervous, they, they panic, so they buy it and then they're, they're stuck with it. So look for other coverage first. Use Cobra as a last resort. So that's one of the things that I wanted to make sure everyone knew about. Most everybody is going to qualify for the marketplace. Not everybody based on income will qualify for Medicaid. And so usually people will start with their income that they're, that's new to them with their loss of job and/or part-time job and decide or start with a marketplace and let that tell you if you're eligible there or not. And then from there, because they will kick you out and they'll send you a little notice that says, oh, your income qualifies you for Medicaid. And then they'll direct you on how to get to Medicaid in your state or your area. Or vice versa. If you go to Medicaid first, Medicaid will tell you if you qualify for them and/or if you should go into the marketplace to look for coverage there. And I think on this website, we have, yeah, this, we have different links and phone numbers we put in there. Some people may not have access to a computer or be computer friendly enough that they want to browse around. So there are phone numbers where you can call and get these answers from the exchange or Medicaid, right? Rachel, you probably answered a lot of questions on that.
That is correct. My biggest suggestion is if you have questions and again, you're having issues trying to look this stuff online because some of this is kind of complicated. I've helped a lot of people through just the, just getting onto the website itself and creating an account, let alone filling out an application. So that's what the call centers are for. Even, 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 like I said, even the marketplace, you know, doesn't deal with Cobra, but they have information on Cobra, they have information on Medicare and Medicaid, they have information on the Affordable Care Act as well as CHIP. So that's what they're there for anytime you want to call and ask some questions. If you want to just see your general results for anything, create an account and fill out an application. It's entirely free. It won't count against you for anything. You won't be charged anything. It's just filling out the application, which it'll ask personal information. I had to follow HIPAA regulations at my job because we dealt with personal information. It's going to ask for your social security, it's going to ask for your household number, it's going to ask who's living with you. But I'll emphasize, because I know this was one of the questions. So you can apply for healthcare through the marketplace just for yourself or you can do it with yourself and your partner or you can do it with you, yourself, you, yourself, your partner and your family. So you can have all of these individuals covered or you can do it yourself. For instance, a lot of the questions that I received was, my spouse works and they get fully covered, but I don't. What can I do? So first off, I would compare, so for the individual that is not covered, go ahead, fill out the application, see what you are covered for. The application, because of the questions that they ask you, will let you know if you qualified for something outside of the marketplace. And they'll give you contact information too. So that's why I always say, just fill out the application, just, just to see. And then, so, so for individuals who are looking to do that, I would fill out the application, check out the plans that are available to you and compare those to, let's say, if your, your partner. and compare those to, let's say, if your your partner is able to extend their insurance to you, see what's cheaper, see what's a better offer. If it's better for you to be under your partner, if that's an option, I would go that route. If it's cheaper for you to have your own insurance through the marketplace, go through that route. But that's the way to go. So again, you can do it for yourself or you can do it for your family. You can't have insurance through your work and through the marketplace. You can only have one or the other. And you can deny health coverage at your work if if you find that the marketplace is a better deal or offers a better situation for you. It just usually the situation is is that usually the coverage that you receive from your job has is just has better offers than what the marketplace offers. It's circumstantial. So I'm just looking, sorry, I'm just looking at the questions that some people submitted.
While you're doing that, I also want to reiterate, a lot of states, New Mexico being one of them. If you do find yourself looking at the marketplace and your spouse has or you have opportunity to have employer coverage, you you can sign up for the marketplace, but you would be paying the full premium. You wouldn't be eligible for the tax credit in the state of New Mexico because you have opportunity to get insurance somewhere else. Marketplace originally was designed for people who didn't have access to insurance anywhere else. So so you might run into that depending on which state you're in. And and then you get, it gets a little complicated because then it can be income-based. So then if your income is less and you have employer options, you still might qualify for the marketplace. So Rachel's idea of filling out an application is really the best resource to figure out where your options really are. Wouldn't you agree, Rachel?
Yes. And again, if and the application seems a little daunting and it can be a little complicated. It can be a little weirdly worded. So that's what the call centers for. There are people trained to go through the application with you, whether they do it for you and read it out loud or they kind of sit and you do it on your computer, but they kind of help you through it. Because they share, they share the same screen. You know, when they give you that information. So that's why I say, just just if you have the time, just fill out that application just just to just to see, just to even see the tax credit. And to answer that question, someone asked if you need a CDIB for the marketplace. So if if you want to be qualified and you want to receive the benefits that that the Affordable Care Act is offering for Native Americans and for Alaskan natives. And again, I'm quoting their the website. You have to be registered with a federally recognized tribe and however that is documented, whether it is through a CDIB card or some sort of identity card or a certificate or what have you. That's what you'll need proof as documentation that you are indeed registered with a federally recognized tribe and that you are able to receive these additional benefits like the tax credit. So.
And your income, there's a lot of qualifying events that go with what is your real income.
So, yeah, and that freaks people out. So the so usually when you're filling out these applications, you're doing it doing it during open enrollment and you're applying it for the following year, right? So in 2020, in November and December, you're gonna be applying. Technically, we can do it any year, but I'm talking about the rest of the general public. During that open enrollment, they're applying for coverage for the following year. And you have to put in your income for that year. Well, we're, we can't tell the future, right? We can only guess or estimate. So these numbers that you're putting in when they ask you for any sort of income or any sort of additional benefits or student loans or what have you, when they're asking these questions on the application, just give the best estimate that you possibly can. You can always go back and change or update your application. And again, if you need help with that, call the call center. As long as you have a working email address, as long as you know the at the email address that is attached to the application, they'll be able to help you. So.
Now, once you fill out an application, you're also the email addresses, well, you have to have that. You just have to have.
That's the biggest thing.
They'll give you a ID number that's attached to that application. And those two things will be working items for you to work with exchange on your questions, the call centers.
And I highly, highly recommend that you remember your password. It's kind of a pain in the butt to do a reset. Sometimes you have to actually call into the call center for them to physically do it for you just because of the safety precautions that the marketplace has to follow. And while the call centers probably aren't very busy, I mean, relatively just depending, people, certain individuals can only apply outside of open enrollment. You have to follow these, what is called special enrollment, which is a whole other thing. You can look that up if you want to on healthcare.gov. But it's certain circumstances that allow individuals to apply for health insurance outside of the open enrollment, which is that November to December date. But again, I want to emphasize, because I wish I knew this earlier, because we are Native Americans or Alaskan natives, Hawaiian natives, because of the Affordable Care Act, it gives us the right to be able to apply for a plan any time of the year. You do not have to wait until November, December to do this. But if now, if let's say that you applied for health insurance for 2020, you're interested applying for 2021, you will have to wait until open enrollment, starting that November date onward to apply for the next year. But if, again, if you want. Right. But if you want the coverage now, it's certainly most definitely available. And again, I'm an example. You can have a plan through the marketplace and still be able to visit Indian Health Centers as well. You can do that. That's not an issue at all. Most health, Indian Health Services will ask if you do have some sort of coverage and they will just keep it on your record in case they need to access that. But it it doesn't change your relationship with the Indian Health Services. They're still available to you. And yes, someone even asked if you are able to go to Indian Health Services if you're outside of the state. So Lawrence's Indian Health Service actually covers lots of individuals that are in the state of Kansas. Some people from Nebraska come down. Some people from Missouri come down. And some people from all the way from Oklahoma come to the Lawrence site. So that's what the Indian Health Services are for, is for anyone, again, who is either from a federal or state-recognized tribe. And those services are for us.
And I put.
If I can, let me jump in on that for just a moment because I want to caution people that your coverage, whether it's your own personal insurance coverage or through the marketplace, or if you do not have insurance and you go to an Indian Health Service facility, they you will only be covered for what they offer on-site. And so just be very, very careful about that because if they refer you out somewhere else and you're not part of the jurisdiction that they serve, they they won't cover that. And and a number of at-large people do get surprised in their bills because of that.
Now, they refer to that as contract health, right?
Correct.
Yeah. If it's outside of what their norm is, right?
The the Indian Health Services is with jurisdictions, it's a little bit complicated. I I won't go into it and I'm I'm no expert either. But so each center is a little bit different on their jurisdictions and what they what they are allowed. And then you have a step further where you have tribes that have their own healthcare systems that aren't connected to the Indian Health Services. So that's a whole other set of rules and regulations and whatnot. But it doesn't hurt to ask, like to call in and, you know, ask, you know, questions, you know, about, okay, if I come to this facility, am I gonna be covered for this? Or do I have to pay out of pocket? You know, things like, do I have to be an actual member of this particular tribe? If this tribe, you know, owns the health center, things like that. They're they're there to answer those questions as well.
Rachel, can you do the next page?
Yeah.
Thanks.
One example, while we're waiting for that, is an example when using Indian Health Services and say you have the marketplace or another insurance and you have co-pays with your marketplace plan or your employer plan, either for your medical or your prescription drugs. One example of the importance of using Indian Health, if you can, if it's convenient, is that you can get, say, your prescriptions or your doctor visits through Indian Health Services without any co-pays. So that's one example of how the Indian Health Services meshes into the marketplace and your employer coverage. And the second thing that's really good that benefits Indian Health Services is they will take your insurance card, file a claim. They'll get reimbursed for whatever benefits are eligible through them. So they're getting funded as well. And I think that's huge information for people to know if they want to support their Indian Health Services in their communities. So that's one of the things we educate, say, our at-large communities on. Okay, next.
Okay. We've answered most of these questions. Let's, our Native Americans exempt from ACA. That may be referring back to when you had to have insurance. That's that's no longer applicable.
Yeah.
So you don't need to worry about that.
The answer would have been yes, but it's not.
Yes.
Anymore.
Yes, exactly. I'm not really sure about the question, any provisions for Cherokee Nation seniors?
I'm not sure what that question is asking.
Okay. I'm not either, but I would I would just say that, to my knowledge, no, there's nothing special with the Cherokee Nation does for seniors.
Right.
Right, okay.
You you don't really, most people don't really get the marketplace along with their senior plans when they turn 65 and have Medicare. But Medicaid can be involved based on your income. And because you can get supplementals, supplemental benefits to Medicare that have no premium cost, but you may have co-pays that are applied. So at that point, you could be eligible for Medicaid based on income or disabilities. And then those co-pays go away because Medicaid kicks in. So there is some coordination of benefits, for lack of a better term.
Ladies, if you'll allow me to interject, I'm sorry, I have some technical difficulties logging in. But we have a question and the question is, should you fill out the application while employed or should you wait until your job is lost?
Oh, you could you can fill out the application anytime. Like I said, it's not gonna affect anything. It's not gonna force you to to do any plans or stuff like that. You have to go through an actual process of like clicking things to accept plans. I encourage individuals, if you'd like to see what is out there and what you are eligible for, especially when we talk about that that tax credit that'll cover your premium, that'll give you health, free healthcare, that you should go ahead and do it. Like, everybody has access to this application as long as you have a working email address that you have access to. I I highly recommend individuals to just at least fill out the application. And maybe I should have stated this earlier. Usually, it's like the first or second page of the application, there will be an obvious question that states, are you, do you identify it as Native American or Alaskan native? Or it asks something along the lines of, are you registered with a federally recognized tribe? And you'll click that and then that'll include all of the other stuff that you fill out in your application. But yeah, I it doesn't hurt if you already have a job. Doesn't hurt if you already have your own health insurance to to fill out that application.
Rachel, I have a question from someone listening. And that is, do you mean the Cherokee citizenship card rather than the CDIB card?
Yeah, I would recommend just doing both. And you can you could put it on the same document or you can submit two different documents. It doesn't, it doesn't matter. I always recommend doing both, though.
And Rachel, once you start logging in on on the marketplace, can you go back at a later time?
Always, always, most definitely. So if like, like, for instance, let's say you get to the section where it talks about your income and you really would like to like put a specific number down, but you don't have it available. You can stop in the middle of the application and it'll save the last thing that you put down. And you can always, that's why I said, always have that working email address, sign back in, go to your account and it'll it'll say, it'll tell you if the application has been completed or not. It'll say incomplete and then you have a button to click on where it'll take you back to the page that you did last. And let's say you want to edit something, you can go through the application and edit things anytime that you want, whether you want to do it yourself or if you called call center, they can help you with that as well.
Great, great information. I know that we are down to the probably the last question that was submitted ahead of time. And I wanted to ask if Jackie or Kelly had anything they would like to add that they feel we ought to touch back on?
Oh, I was kind of checking off some of these questions and it said, one of the questions that I was looking at said, does can, does the ACA insurance or the marketplace insurance cover out-of-Oklahoma Cherokee Nation State Insurance? And can it be used as a second form of insurance? And the answer to that is yes. It can be used as a supplemental if somebody wants to do that. In fact, I actually do that here. I have insurance through my employer that I retired from. I access IHS for probably 80% of my healthcare coverage. And then I have Medicare because of my age. So all of, so I start with IHS and then what they can't cover and/or what I need outside the box, I do the other coverages. So there is supplement for that. And then it talks about what if children attend college in other states?
I was gonna touch that. Okay, so like I said, with the marketplace, you can apply for a plan to either cover yourself, yourself and your spouse or partner or the yourself and the entire family. That includes your children who are going to college. There it in the application, there are specific questions that you will answer that will indicate that your child is going through college. I believe your children can be on your insurance till 26, 27? 26. So that is available, but I will let you know a lot of the baselines for these health insurance is it's zip code based on your coverage. So if your child who is out of state needing services but is covered on your insurance, unfortunately, they would have to pay that out-of-network cost, most likely. Again, it depends on your plan, but most of these is the, your child has to be within the zip code area in order for them to receive the, you know, the coverage of whatever your plan pays for. But if they're going to receive treatment outside of that network, usually you're gonna have to pay that outside-of-network cost, if that makes sense.
Right, and a lot of students get student coverage through their universities.
Right, right.
They can have their office visits or whatever, some general coverage while they're away at college. And then they come home when, on their breaks and in the summer for whatever medical treatment that they need.
Exactly. So like for my instance, you know, I went to Indian, I went to Haskell-Nine Nations University, which is a travel college. Exactly. So like for my instance, you know, I went to Indian, I went to Haskell Indian Nations University, which is a travel college. And Indian, the Haskell Indian Health Services is right there, located on campus. So that Indian Health Services is offered to both students and the general public. So I was able to go to the IHS on campus and do the things that I needed to do, treatment or otherwise. And I was also still covered through my parents who were living back in California at the time. So anytime that I went home for, during the breaks, would be a good time for me to go see the dentist or it'd be a good time for me to go get a physical or anything that I wanted to be covered under the insurance that I didn't have to, like, directly pay out of pocket. That's what I did. I wish insurance covered more out, but that's just, that's just the system that is implemented.
And, and I'd like to add too, nobody's asked this question, but not everybody in a family is going to be a Native American citizen. And so I know eventually somebody's going to think, you know, have that question, yes. The whole family can apply for insurance on the Affordable Care Act in the marketplace all-on-one application anytime. So it doesn't matter, the whole family can do the application together. So it doesn't matter if you have one spouse that's the native and, and the other one is not, that does not matter at all.
Right. I think someone did a question on here. The other one was, can I go out of state for my care? And I'm, I'm going to say I agree with Rachel, that you have to stay within your networks. You can't just opt to go from New Mexico to Colorado because you've heard they have great treatment there. You have to have authorization to do that, or else you would be out of pocket to do that, okay?
And this is information that a lot of people don't know off the top of their head. And that's why, again, call the marketplace if you have these kinds of questions, because they have answers and, or they have resources that they can, they can give you in order to find those answers. And second of all, if you are, just in general, if you are, if you are covered, you know, through your job or through the marketplace or what have you, call the insurance companies, because legally they have to tell this information to you. And ask them, ask them what your in-network is, you know, and what your, if, if you can get out of network, you know, you can ask these questions from your insurance company directly and they have that information. They will let you know if, what kind of circumstances, if you have to go out of network, are you going to be covered? Or are you going to have to pay out of pocket? So I, again, these people, you know, at the marketplace, on the call center, as well as a, your actual insurance carrier, there's the people that you get your insurance from. They have this information. And remarkably enough, the call center also has the contact information. Like, let's say you do select a plan, they have that contact information, so let's say you've lost it. You can call the marketplace and say, I forgot how to contact my people, can you let me know what plan I'm on? And how I can get, get a telephone number, and they have that information.
Okay. Another question was, do I have to pay someone to help me sign up? No, you don't have to pay for that at all. And then, what if I have pre-existing conditions? And that doesn't apply anymore, so it doesn't, that has nothing to do with whether you're eligible for insurance or not. Anybody, anybody is eligible to apply for the marketplace. And then depending on your income base, where you qualify. But it has, but pre-existing conditions are not a game changer anymore. Okay? And that's all I have.
All right, were there any other last questions? This last page that we have up, for people who prefer to call, we did give you a couple of phone numbers here. For the, one for the marketplace and the other for Medicaid Human Services Department. And then some people were asking about Indian Health Services, where the facilities are. If you go onto this website, it's going to show you the United States and you can click into your area. Some of them will cover larger areas, so you can, you can find that out. It will give you phone numbers and emails.
It's pretty detailed.
Find out, yeah. Yeah, thank you, Deborah.
Ladies, we received, just a few more, so questions here. And one of them is, are the rates you receive in the marketplace as a Native American less than the marketplace for other individuals regardless of income, or only if income is below a certain level?
So the tax credit is, in general, based upon income? I wish I had a perfect formula that they gave you in order to calculate all that stuff. And unfortunately, they don't, the IRS kind of, and Social Security and other people, like, throw numbers together to get all of these, to get all this information.
But the answer is no.
Yeah.
Different, they're the same for everyone, it's all, it's about your income, what you.
Correct. So that, so the, so the coverage is most definitely based off of your income. Native Americans are automatically qualified for that coverage, but the amount is going to vary based upon your income, your household size and other factors as well. And again, it also is based upon the plan you choose, right? So if you're looking at predominantly bronze plans, most of those are going to be zero premium because most, because your deductible, or your, sorry, your tax credit is covering that entire premium. But like Deborah said, oh, it's based, based upon income.
Okay, one other question, it says, I am confused. So we can still use the Affordable Care Act if we are on Medicare, age 65 up? I believe that was the answer, but would you?
No. Well, and let me just qualify, in New Mexico, you would have Medicare and then you would have a supplement. If you wanted to have the marketplace, you could, but they're probably going to advise you to look for a senior supplemental plan with no premium as opposed to the marketplace. Okay? So if that's helpful. Did that answer your question?
Uh, that was a question asked from our audience that they had posted.
Right, but did that answer your question, how I responded, did that?
She said yes.
Yes.
Okay, all right, great.
Is there anything else you all would like to cover? You all have done such a great job tonight, I really appreciate it.
Again, if you're just curious of what you're, you're qualified for, like I said, for Medicare, Medicaid, Cobra, CHIP, any of those things, just fill out the application and your eligibility paper will come back after that application. Again, it's free, won't do anything, won't affect anything. It'll just show what your eligibility is. And like I said, if something were to come up where it says that you are, you are eligible for Medicaid or you are eligible for Medicare, it will have contact information on the eligibility sheet. So you can ask additional questions.
Wonderful.
The other thing I had a note on here, let me just, real quick. We talked a lot about income-based, everything has to do with income. And I just wanted to let you know that the marketplace and Medicaid will ask you to verify that income. So you don't just get to call in and say, I make $12,000 a year. You have to justify that insurance based on your income tax or your payroll forms or Social Security, whatever income you're getting. You have to be able to justify what you've given the marketplace as your income.
Yeah, they will ask for contact information on your job, or if you do get income elsewhere, it'll ask how. So, most definitely. And that's why I say, you know, the best estimate that you could possibly do will be, but you don't straight up lie. And again, when you're filling out for like 2021, again, you're not going to know 100% your income. And a lot of individuals, when I was working for the call center, they're like, oh, well, I'm thinking about maybe I'm going to be switching a job in January or February. That's okay, like I said, you can always go back and change the application. That's the beauty of the application, you can always back and change it and reflect it more accurately. But yeah, please, please don't lie on these applications.
They will come back.
That's good news, I mean, good information, thank you for sharing that. Is there anything else you all would like to close with? Any tips or other information we have not touched?
Jackie, did we pretty much cover everything we talked about earlier?
Yeah, yes, we, we covered that and more. I'm, you know, it's, this is such a huge subject and I'm just, I'm so thankful for, you know, Rachel and Deborah coming, you know, to work with me on this. And I'm, I'm happy that we were able to give this information out to the people, because it is so needed. And especially at this time, you know, I hope that people will use it, you know, and go to the marketplace and fill out that application and, you know, to find out what your options are. And, and I definitely, you know, wish everybody, you know, good health and, you know, and the best of luck and, you know, that we're all thinking about everybody, especially during this time. So I'm, I'm just so happy that we were able to do this.
Thank you all so much for participating. We're truly grateful for all the information you've shared. You've probably helped countless, countless Cherokees with this very important information. Counselor Coats, will this be available for others to view that weren't able to get in tonight?
Yeah, we're going to be posting this online. We're going to do some light editing on it and probably within four days to a week, we will have it available. I'll be sending out the link to my distribution list. We'll be posting it on our Facebook pages, I'm sure both of us will be, so.
Great, great. Again, I want to thank Rachel and Jackie and Deborah for all their input on this very, very important subject tonight. You know, when we have more than seven million citizens in America out of work at this time, this is going to help countless people and I truly appreciate it, and I know Counselor Coats does as well. I would like to announce that on April the 22nd, two weeks from tonight, we're going to be doing another town hall on the coronavirus. I would like to share with you that as of today, inside jurisdiction, we have 28 cases and there have regrettably been two deaths. And so if I can encourage anyone to do anything, please pay attention to social distancing and please stay inside as much as possible. I do want you to know our guest on April the 22nd will be Dr. David Gann. He's with Clinical Services for Cherokee Health Systems. Lisa Pivik, she's the Senior Director of Public Health. And then Todd Enlow, our Chief of Staff. And he is the Administration Lead in this coronavirus outbreak that we are experiencing at this time within Cherokee Nation. And again, thank you, Rachel, Jackie and Deborah, we appreciate you so much. And everybody stay inside and stay safe.